Good afternoon, everyone. I'm now going to call the joint meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners and the Norfolk County Agricultural High School Board of Trustees to order. Going to ask the clerk to call the rolls.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
President.
Mr. Shea?
Present.
Mr. Parrish?
Present.
Mr. Sheehan?
Present.
Mr. Stady?
I believe Mr. Stady is present, but we'll get him if he did not. We have a quorum. Anyway, I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, infinite, and just as. Thank you. On Thursday, March 12, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20. That order was effective immediately or until it is rescinded, our state of emergency is terminated. On February 12, 2022, by action of the legislature, that order was extended until July 15, 2022. This meeting is live and in Zoom under this general law, which we're waiting anxiously because it's going to expire in two days, but I'm sure that something will be done. This joint meeting, I'm going to read a belief statement. I'm Joe Shea, Chairman of the Norfolk County Commissioners Staff, and on behalf of Chairman Ed Little, who's here with us, grateful for any members of the public taking time out on this glorious day to come to this meeting. The purpose of this meeting today is in response to many constituent desires for additional public input in the solar project, and after consultation with legal counsel as well as fellow board members, we will be expanding the public comment window for the next phase of the solar project. Therefore, today, we will call on our vendor, Mr. Andrew Bernstein, who's at CareSage Energy, to give us an update on his portion of the project and present some adjustments that have been made in response to constituent concerns over the past few years of public dialogue. We'll then open up questions to any members of the commission or the Board of Trustees and take public comment from anyone who's here. We may not be able to give any answers. I'll give all answers today, but we'll make sure to circle back to you. We will be holding this meeting on a Zoom hybrid, as I explained, so that more people can participate and so that can be recorded and placed upon our website. We have a quorum, as I previously stated. Also sitting with us today is our principal, Robin Van Drants. We want to welcome Robin because she's in her first... She's a newbie, so to speak, but I think she's probably been here for five months.
Intimate.
Welcome, Robin.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to call on our vendor, Andrew Bernstein of CareSage Energy. Anyone that's going to speak, by the way, I'd ask to come to the podium, and we need your name and address.
Andrew, right back. Thank you. Andrew Luntzey from CareSage Energy. So I'm going to basically go over some of the slides that we've already talked about before. I don't know how well you can see those.
We can't see them.
They haven't really changed that much, so I'll highlight where we stand. So the Ag Solar Project, this has been a new approach after about two years of looking at options or a little bit more, and it's a new project that integrates into the original Norfolk County and Aggie Sustainability Initiative. It's extending an educational component from the North Street projects and the parking lot canopy and roof projects. It's adding to experimentation with pollinator species. And importantly, it's integrating in an agricultural component. It's an excellent fit with the Aggie curriculum. It's a learning experience from design to completion to operations. We've discussed this before. It's cutting-edge. It positions Aggie as the leader in sustainability and agricultural takes. It's a marketing and partner opportunity. The way this program is set up in Massachusetts, it's integrated with UMass Amherst, the agricultural school there, so you can also partner. That would be a partnering opportunity. And you can also partner with a construction contractor, and we've asked them to offer internships from construction phase with eligible students and graduates. It also involves multiple disciplines at the Aggie that we've discussed, from forestry to environmental science to sustainable farming. It expands available land for hay and agriculture that provides energy, discounted energy, rent, and restoration of proposed location, which has been. The... Oops, I think you might be ahead of me, Bill. So we're... I don't know if this is the right one, and you pulled up.
This is July 13.
Okay, well, we can talk about that. So the environmental benefits, Fisher Street, it's a 1-megawatt AC agricultural solar project. The carbon offsets and equivalencies, which is critical. Annually, the offset and carbon offsets are 1,769 tons of carbon dioxide. The carbon sequestration equivalent is to saving 1,967 acres. That's the offsetting the three and a half or four acres of second growth trees that would be need to be removed from the project. Okay, next one. So the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources Agricultural Solar Opportunity, this is a program that was set up where they wanted to extend farming land, which was in danger of going away in Massachusetts to find additional ways to have revenue as well as extend and explore how you could help solar work on farming lands. It encourages development of solar agricultural solutions. It's built on current farmland by definition. It's a raised structure that allows for agricultural workers or machinery parent approximately eight to 10 feet below. It can have no more than 50% shading, so that the panels... That means that the panels won't create more than 50% shade. It's a crop and farming plan endorsed by the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources and UMass Amherst to ensure viability. There's annual reporting. The whole program has to be approved by MDR as well as UMass Amherst. There's an ongoing monitoring and research program delivering an annual scorecard to DOER, UMass Amherst, and MDR. And following initial discussions with MDR and the DOER in Aggie, there's significant teaching and research potential. Additionally, we put in for a federal DOER grant that can provide additional resources for educational benefits and teaching with this project. And this is just the first stage of that grant. So the history of this project, and many have heard and discussed. Recently, there's been six months of discussion, sidewalks, and refinement. The project's been looking at different... We've looked at different locations along with the Aggie and county for a couple of years. We've moved it around. Overall, it's an exciting and it's really a unique opportunity. As I said, the project would be about 1-megawatt AC, which was reduced to allow for proper distancing from putters. There's no fence lines around the array. The existing hay operation will continue and could be expanded to experimental cropping. CareSage will collaborate with the Aggie team in designing the array to suit the cropping plan and bring in outside experts to assist. As of right now, we're looking at just hay in the first year. And the collaboration that I discussed before is just the potential to publish results to papers jointly from the Aggie as well as UMass Amherst. Overall, this has the potential to be the first project, an axolar project in agriculture school country that we know of. There's approximately four in Massachusetts right now and more that are being killed. And it will position the Aggie as a leader in studying agricultural energy. Okay, next. So the current design. So if you look at the picture on the right, we've moved this around in response to the 516 community meeting. The current proposed layout has been moved north and west, resulting in 33% fewer trees removed. And we'll talk about it. Go to the next slide, please, Bill. So the details, and I'll go slowly so people can see this. This hasn't changed. The array would sit on approximately seven acres, overlapping four and a half acres of existing field. There's no fences. The total farmable field space would increase from about nine acres to 13 acres, so you'd be able to hay that. The minimum setback would be 100 feet from the property boundaries. Larger setbacks closer to 170 feet in the southern wooded areas. The row spacing height, the panels that would be used are called track panels. Basically, they go from horizontal to vertical, but that's allowed so equipment can get underneath the area to hay and take care of the crops. The final row height spacing will be based on the farm equipment needs and Aggie input. Currently, the panels are set to 11 feet high and 20 feet between the rows. The tracking system used to increase... It's used to increase production and as well as minimize shade and allow for equipment movement. There's turnarounds of 50 feet at either end of the rows for equipment. We spoke into the Aggie and looked at what their existing equipment is right now, and this design incorporates that. Finally, in terms of clearing, we've had several locations for this project. We've moved it around to minimize tree cutting overall, but working with the Aggie forestry tree team, rather. We're having less than four acres of second growth harvest. There'll ever be timber removed. Some trees have already been removed as the normal process. And then there would be important plantings in the southeast that have been identified and will be avoided.
Can you move the Zoom people across the top because it's kind of blocking everything? No, if you scroll them across the top, open it up and change it, it should be able to go across the top, and you should be able to, so we can see everything.
Yeah, these are the same slides you've seen before.
But we don't have access to the slides. Yeah, we never... We could not locate the minute to him.
Well, they didn't post it.
Yeah, we haven't found them. We've tried.
And in terms of the timeline, we have worked with the Aggie, have teachers and students involved. We'll refine the design, cropping plant, and the ag equipment plan, define the educational components along with Aggie, UMass, develop field study plans for the annual analysis and reporting, integrate it to the ongoing curriculum. And then we have to complete the paperwork and work with DOER and MDR and UMass and bring in an outside consultant. We've had two consultants that we've presented to the Aggie, and we selected one consultant who would retain on CareSage's budget, who would work to help us, who's already built, I think, two of these projects. And then finally, we'll complete the design, solar equipment needed. We'll look at landscaping. We'll look at where we need to put some trees after sidewalks with neighbors to make sure we're doing it the best we can in terms of screening. We'll have a go-to, as we've offered site plan review with Walpole. After that, we'll do our equipment where it's placed, and we do construction approximately first or second quarter next year.
Okay, what I'm going to do is open it up first for the Board of Trustees, if they have any questions. Before... Commissioner Stady, are you on the Zoom? Okay, it doesn't affect the quorum anyway.
I am here, yes.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, just listen.
Okay, I'm going to open it up first. Folks, the board members, and then anyone that wants to have any questions will have at it. And I don't know that... Andrew, why don't you sit up here at the end of this table? All right, just wait to get it started. Board of Trustees, any questions at all?
Can I start?
Mark first, and then Dick.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, if you walk through the area, some trees, not by CareSage.
No, why was that?
I think that's just normal culling that the school does.
I saw in your January presentation that it was seven and a half acres of forest, and now it's less than that.
Yeah, we've continually reduced it. We've moved it from feedback. So it's down to a little bit, probably about three and a half or four acres. If you look at the different locations, we pushed it back further north to take into consideration some of the feedback we received.
And I did see that maybe the cross-country trails or some of the other trails that the students and kids enjoy that that's impacted, is that...
There'll be no fences. They can still go around it. We've tried to avoid the one cross-country. There'll be one cut across that they'll have to go around, but they could run right underneath it without a problem.
Just one more question about the forest part. Was it the forester that made some determinations about the viability of the area? How was it determined that that particular wooded area could be included?
We've looked at all sorts of different areas, working with the school, and we've been advised that this is second growth trees. Some trees are trees that you might want to leave, but trying to put it together, this was the best location originally. It was in the back where the hayride is, and that's the area where it required much more tree cutting and different types of trees. So this was the compromise, having several site visits with faculty and looking at what makes the most sense from the zone of construction.
So is the hayride road, is that...
Not attached, no.
Definitely.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
Absolutely.
Well, not in the back where the original site was.
You can go walk through it. I can show you.
Well, on this side, there'll be a path that you'll be able to get around as part of it, but we moved it from the original locations, you know, where the hayride was in the back, and moved it. And in the front part, we're cleaning up, which is the dump and the resources, but you'll be able to get around this whole with horse and carriages. You'll be able to get around this whole facility, so you'll be able to walk around underneath it.
So three of those rows right there in that picture are covering the path that the hayride goes on.
Right, but you'll be able to go underneath all of it. There'll be no fences.
With a wagon and a tractor?
With a wagon and tractor.
At 11 feet.
Yeah.
I think those wagons are a little bit taller than 11 feet.
If it's taller than 11 feet, that would potentially be a problem, but you can also turn the panels so that they'll be vertical, so you can go right through the middle. So there'll be complete space going up, and they won't be covered all the time. You turn them facing basically 100 acres.
I'll address that when I ask questions, but I'll just wait my turn.
Commissioner Stady?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andrew, first of all, thank you for your presentation. Listening in, I'm just trying to ascertain if this presentation today included perhaps any significant changes based upon the most recent meeting that we had almost about a month ago at the Aggie school. We did a site walk, and we talked to some of the neighbors, as you know. And if not, second part of my question would be, I thought at the end, I thought I heard you say, "When you go to site plan before the town of Walpole, you might include some screening and other measures that aren't shown here." So is that your intention, and does this plan reflect anything different? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sure. The changes that have been made is the location. It has been pushed further back, further north and to the west. And yes, it will include screening based on our walk. We have to look at site plan. We've got to look at the angles and look at the final layout, but we did commit with you that we put in screening.
Okay, so I want to make sure I'm clear. So this plan now does reflect further distance away from the neighbors who had a concern. Is that correct? How much more did you push it away, Andrew? I'm sorry. 50 feet? 100 feet?
From... It depends on...
Well, we're saying the last location, the last time we had a plan.
Last location is pretty much the same. It was pushed further. It was pushed further before that meeting, or we pushed it from a prior meeting. We pushed it further north and further west. But from the last one, we walked with the neighbors, it's the same location.
Okay, so it's the same. All right. Okay, I misunderstood you. So you didn't do anything in terms of pushing it farther away from the time I met with you, and you did your presentation. Is that correct?
We had done it before that meeting. We did it for that meeting.
Okay, and did you just say on site plan review, when you get that far, you would be open to adding some additional measures, screening, things like that?
We're committing to adding screening, especially in the areas where the neighbors are, that there's site plan issues, sideline issues.
Okay, all right. That's all I have for now. Thank you. Thank you.
Patrick is next.
All right. So this new location would directly impact and prevent the haunted area from happening, as it always has. Not only is the haunted area the largest fundraiser for the students, it's something that everyone in the whole county comes to enjoy. Last year, the students actually raised $40,000, and the hayride pays for yearbooks, prom. It also pays for the class gift. So when we're sitting up there giving out the diplomas, classes 2003 chairs, my class purchased those chairs. So the haunted area affects a lot of things. And I know you're saying that it's not going to, but that goes right down the path that where the haunted area goes. You want your kids to be riding on the haunted area underneath solar panels.
There's no danger at all.
Okay. All right, so you'll be first in line to buy tickets. All right, gotcha. Next. The county government has dozens of municipal buildings with roofs and park lots. I know both Ed and Joe have said they don't like roof panels. Has anyone considered using all available existing infrastructure before going forward with putting any ground-mounted solar panel stuff?
You asking the question?
Yeah, yeah.
Let me try to answer. I've only been here since January of 16. I did attend one meeting in December of 15. So it was introduced to me by a consultant from the town of Westwood. I forget his name, but I think you remember. At that time, the only thing... Solar wasn't new to me, except that I only thought solar was on the roof of homes various other buildings. I've been told that they studied other areas. We don't own dozens of buildings, but we own a lot. We own six courthouses as well as four other buildings in downtown Dillon, as well as the golf course, as well as this property. Every time we talk about putting something in downtown Dillon, even a parking lot, which is there, and even improving it, it triggers a whole stream of questions. I'm just telling you my experience in my five years. It seems like since I got on board here, and there are newer trustees, Mark is newer than I am, the only area currently that's been talked about is the Aggie, but they were well on their way, even in December of 15. Then we get into 16. We tried to take certain votes, which if we ever... If one we ever get to vote, I'm sure we're all going to relive it, relive the memories of taking those votes. But I certainly realized that they weren't going to be on the roofs. I didn't want them on the roof of this building. When you come down 1A, and this building is not exactly attractive, but it's really been here since probably day one. I don't know if it was built in 1920, but, you know, I think it would ruin the look of it. But when I realized it was going in the fields and looked at all of the benefits, et cetera, and listened to everything, I realized that they're going to put it into various fields here. Since then, it's been a subject of all of this fate and all of this back and forth, but I have to tell you that at some point, we're going to cut, and the baby's going to be born here. Everyone has rights. I'm sure it'll be fully vetted in the courts, and we'll go from there. That's what happens. But when you look at all these rights of refusal for the town of Walpole, rights of refusal for the Commonwealth, and all these in the public hearing that we went through and the other one went through, and we're going to go through another one after this. We're trying to do everything according to law, but... You know, do you want to put it on the golf course? I just don't know how you could do it, but, you know, you could talk about it, but if you say you're going to put it on a courthouse in downtown Dillon, I got to tell you, they don't even want to change it. And I say, they don't want to change any look of those historic buildings, and I think it would cause the same amount of... The same amount of kickback that this causes, not in my neighborhood, so to speak. And you're a Dillon person. You know better than I, but... Want to put it on a rookline court on the roof, maybe? You want to put on a rental court, maybe?
The registry deeds park lot.
Registry deeds park lot is a big, big, big park. It's very unutilized. There's no question about it, but...
And that was Commissioner Stady. He suggested that before.
Was the answer yes or no? It's been discussed. That hasn't been answered.
Wait a minute. Well, anyone can speak when we're through. You got to come up and give your name. I mean, is there another study for other buildings? I've never seen one, but that's not what this subject's about. This subject's about solar and hay. We're going to stick to this subject.
All right, so is that a no? We haven't looked at other?
Like you said, I can only speak from December of 15 to today. No. Andrew may be able to tell you about the studies. I don't know.
Well, we didn't vote on it originally until 2017 initially.
Yeah, I have all my records. I was there.
All right, I have a few more questions. So many juniors and seniors are approaching this new year, having had two COVID school years. How many additional disruptions can we expect from this project, setting up a solar farm, and how would it affect our students, junior and senior year?
Is that for me?
Anyone, really?
We built solar projects around high schools, other schools. We built them around at this school, and we had minimal disruptions. In the case of this one, I don't anticipate a lot of disruptions because we can do it out there in the field, and we'll be away. We won't have any trucks on site here. This is a smaller project to build. It's an easier project to build and certainly bringing cranes and putting on roofs for doing the parking lot.
All right, I just have a few more questions. So the county, this is basically to the commissioners. The county has embarked with two consulting studies to better assist you guys in running the county government, the Abrams Group and the Ripples Group. Why haven't you guys hired a solar consulting firm to come in to work with us on this project?
Why haven't we hired a solar consulting?
Yeah, you've used consulting firms for, you know, other things. Why didn't we hire one initially for us?
Well, I guess partial answer is, we hired those two firms in the last couple of years, and we still haven't recovered from the kickback. No one likes change. That doesn't mean that everything can't be studied, but, you know, you're a member of the squad, just like everyone else is. And, you know, we're the sounding board. We have to make the decision. It's not an easy one, but it's going to be done. But I'm sorry, go ahead.
You did have a consultant who was part of this when you bid out the RFI, the consultant from Westwood who studied options for you. This was... This was before, but he was part of the advisory board and he was quite involved, he has significant experience in solar.
That was pre me, but I think I was at, I think I was at one meeting, the last meeting you came to. So it had to be in December of fifteen, or January of sixteen, I think his name is Innis. I know it's from Westwood, I know that. Cause he talked about other schools.
It's Tom.
So that wasn't done with the schools board of trustees, because I don't ever remember putting on that. That was done with the commissioners or?
He was part, he was part of the school. Certainly a record, I have a record, I, I met him, but I only saw him once. And he, he actually, I remember distinctly because I was a little put back. He actually said we were missing the boat. And the, the boat was leaving the harbor, so to speak, and you bet, if you don't do it now, you're really making mistakes. And he cited another place in Massachusetts. I mean, in my case, it, it kind of went in one ear and out the other, but as I, as I, as I, as I look more into it, I realized he wasn't talking about putting solar on top of these buildings, so it made me feel different about it. But whether he got paid or not, but I don't know, I'm sure we got a record of it if he got paid. I don't, I don't know if Tammy would know, but I'll look, I'll find out and look it up. And I believe his name was Tom. Innis, Innis.
Oh, that wasn't Innis.
No?
No.
Okay, do you remember it, Bill?
No, I'm trying to think.
That was before you, Bill.
Yeah.
He may have been looking in from his house.
So there was someone, we just don't really know who it was, is that, that's what we're saying?
I can, I can look that up.
Okay, all right.
He was involved with the whole RFI process.
Okay.
Significant experience in value.
He did love to work in Westwood.
He was involved, he worked at EverSource, he had an energy service company, significant experience.
I just have a couple more. So what I initially signed up for was a solar project with the roofs, parking lots, and I expected some sort of a ground array. I didn't know how big it was gonna be. I didn't think in total, if you include all the phases, it's about thirty years. So I know we're talking about phase four today. I just want to clear something up once and for all. Fred O'Brien called me and said that Joe Shea, Peter Collins, and Rick Fitzpatrick met with Kirsaj Energy during COVID and made this project bigger than I thought it was. Is, is that true?
What do you want me to tell you?
I want to know, did you guys, how big, like?
When did you meet?
No, it was, it was well before COVID, we discussed lots of, we evaluated every roof here, that's not accurate. We evaluated every roof, a lot of the buildings were too old. We worked with Rick Fitzpatrick, but the original plan did change, was done well before COVID. We looked at the sites because we're looking at the old, where the haunted hayride in the woods was. I think you were at that meeting when we discussed that one, where we moved it away from that. So that was way earlier than COVID.
Okay, I just wanted to check because that's what he told me and I might as well ask you guys.
No, and then we had the public meeting. Bill, I don't know what the first public meeting was in.
It was, it was on.
No, no, this was well before that, we had a public meeting in person in two thousand and nineteen that another gentleman from my firm attended and we talked about the North Street, we talked about the whole the ground mounts and that was part of it. So as far as I know with our records, this was incorporated from two thousand and nineteen on.
Okay. I just have two more. All right, so at Rick Fitzpatrick's last meeting, I spoke with him and Peter Collins at the very end. And they both said that they regretted the solar project going the direction that it went. I just have a question for Peter personally, do you still feel this way about the solar project? Can, can, is there any way we can look at different locations in the county for this?
He's having connection issues.
He still there?
He is, but he's muted. Do you have further question?
I have one more, yeah, it's more of a statement really, but we've moved this project multiple times. It came as a surprise to some folks on this board, how upset the majority of people would be about destroying the woods and green space surrounding our school and community. This project is not a good fit, in my opinion, until every other parking lot and roof are examined and utilized. The county government has no business taking this land that the taxpayers actually own. I was an environmental technology major at this school in two thousand and three and Dan Argivo was my teacher. I understand Peter Kane and some of his students support this project and they have their reasons. I know Dan Argivo does not. We should be setting an example by utilizing existing infrastructure before destroying any of this land. The overwhelming majority of people who know about this project support solar but not destroying green space to do so. How well is the county government going to disseminate information to the abotters and the constituency and the county going forward? Like how, how far in advance are you gonna let people know about meetings? How are you gonna do it?
Oh, is that directed to me?
Anyone, anyone?
I can answer.
Sure.
Joe, please.
You said at the outset, we follow the open meeting law. We check without a council, we're trying to do everything in a manner that the law requires. It doesn't mean there isn't pullback and give back, everyone knows that. You talk about, how is the county gonna do this? This whole thing was voted by this board, of which the commissioners are three people. Do you remember every vote you took? In fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
Not every single one, but I've acknowledged that I.
I mean, how did it get to the point of it was voted? If, if it was you know, so much, that's what we're here for, there was so much non-disclosure, so to speak. I mean, again, it appears we're gonna end up in court and that's and that's the way it is, we live or die by it, but someone built this school in nineteen seventeen, the county. I bet someone didn't want this school there. I can't go back and say Charles Dickens, who was chairman of the board, wrote that the school shouldn't be on Route one A in Walpole at the corner of Fisher Street. So, but we only have to deal with what's in front of us. And that's the purpose of this meeting, and we're gonna have another meeting. We had the famous Zoom public hearing. What was the date of that, Bill?
Twenty nineteen, the first one?
No, that was on Zoom because of COVID.
Yeah, that was.
Twenty, December twenty twenty.
All Zoom. You know, we're still gonna have the Zoom component to our meetings, but we're gonna have live meetings, so. I think the ship has left the harbor, so to speak, and if, if the only relief for everybody is in court. And I don't want to spend any money in court, I don't think the other commissioners do, but I mean, we have to be responsible for actions of this board. You, you cite Chairman O'Brien. You know, he's no longer a commissioner for a lot of reasons, but he had left before he passed, passed four months later. I had lots of conversations with him. I said, you know, Fran, I looked at this information here. This, this, this has gone a long way, it even had gone a long way before I came here in, in December of fifteen. Originally, he said, he said very little, and then at the end he got, he got agitated about it, but I mean, it was no good. What good is it to, to bring Chairman O'Brien to do it? Either way, anyway, people would miss some of those votes too, just like you and I did.
So I just have one more question, so we know now that you know, people are concerned with this project, as is with all the negative feedback we're getting, I mean, have we already signed a contract and are we just going through the motions? We haven't taken a vote on this yet, I mean, we're not really, we're moving into different places, but we should be looking into every other possible place to put this. I mean, no one's gonna be, I know you say people in Dillon will be mad about it covering.
I, I said that there'll be a kickback, mad is not the right word. But they're very proud of downtown Dillon, and you, you should know better than I, you live in Dillon. We're working on painting the roof and we get we get fifty calls on the dome, which we spent a million dollars, over a million dollars, almost done. Just selecting, we had three meetings on selecting the color of the dome, which is to ensure that it's not red. I don't think anyone's gonna entertain. And I, 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 I don't, I, to say that we, we, we would look at putting solar on the
I'm not saying on that courthouse.
Well, then where? We're just kicking the can. Unfortunately, we never, that was never presented to us, was never voted on. But we have to deal with what we have here, you know.
Well, right now, there isn't a single panel laying on the ground. You know, we're acting as if we've already signed a contract and taken a vote, is that what happened?
Three Mr. Chair, Attorney Lopez can correct me. You have already entered into an E M S A on Hilltop.
Okay.
You've been working with the vendor, which was hired through a public procurement process back in seventeen. Andrew, when we, when did you win the bid?
Seventeen.
Yeah, so we're very far down the path and the, the final step in the process after another public hearing will be to vote to enter into a, a contract with them for this portion, the fourth portion. But you have already entered into three contracts for the roof, the, the canopies and Hilltop.
Okay, so the last contract is for this parcel, phase four, okay. And again, why was the meeting changed to today?
We did, through Mr. Chair, we heard from people like yourself asking for a second public hearing, so the commission and the board of trustees are actually asking to that request. We'll have another, another public hearing at the end of July, beginning of August.
Okay, and do you know timeframe, when will people be notified of the meeting?
A public hearing has to be posted ten days in advance in both the, is that right?
Right, more than ten.
No, public hearing, public hearing is, is ten days, it has to be published in the local, two local papers of record, twice in advance of the hearing as well. And then after that, you have forty-five days at the minimum, sixty at the maximum to act, so you're talking about the middle of September.
All right, I know you guys think you own this land, but you don't. This is the taxpayers' land in the end. I know he said that he owns it, that the county owns this land, belongs to the taxpayers.
The county's name is on it, Matt, come on.
Sure.
We own the count, the people, the courts, the golf course, come on. That's, you're nitpicking.
Okay.
You don't want me to say the county commissioners, you want me to say the people own the land, that's good, they do. But we're working under a set of rules, the general laws, the general laws on procurement, the general laws on notification. When they work in your favor, people love them, when they, when they miss a meeting or something, they say, oh, this was, it didn't work in our favor. And I say that after thirty-three years, twenty-five is city clerk in the city of Quincy checking the open meeting law for conservation, for planning, for zoning, and do we miss some of them? Yes, every city in town does. What happens? You go back and do it again. And it's, you know, it's, it's an umbrella that when it works for you again, it's convenient, when it doesn't work for you, people want to challenge it. Don't, don't say the commissioners. The county is an entity, it's the entity through which manage these buildings. It's no one's fault, it's no one's issue, it's, the county's been around since seventeen ninety-three. I think Ed Little is the only one in this room who probably remembers that, but you know, this is this is pretty old stuff. But a lot of them, a lot of the open meeting law and, and stuff is fairly current, but we're living by it, but it's more than ten, twelve years old under its present form, so. You know, and each time we do this, there's a whole notification process and we're gonna continue to follow the law. And I, I I guess it's easy to hope in somewhere else, but as of now, I don't think we can talk about anything else because we're, we're too far down the line and that's all I can tell you, you know. Again, it was somewhat down the line when I got here in sixteen, I was, you know.
Well, we didn't vote initially until two thousand seventeen on this project.
Right, but you were there in sixteen when they were I was getting calls because we were dropping the ball and they said the commissioners were holding up and there was a round robin going on. You must have gotten calls like that.
I've only gotten calls about how could you possibly destroy the school with this?
No one ever called you, okay, for, for salt?
No.
No one ever told you?
No.
All right, that's fine. I get calls from both sides, I don't know why you don't get calls from both sides.
I don't have any more questions, but thank you, everybody.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question.
So I have mine.
I mean, Hilltop, I heard Hilltop mentioned, is there, is there a plan for Hilltop or?
Yeah, we're under litigation with the neighbors.
I see.
You all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, does anyone, go ahead, come right up.
Mari Risco, I live on Susan Drive. The first thing I want to address is that May meeting, where you just said that it was required to have a Zoom access to it. There was not a Zoom access to that.
What meeting, the big one?
It was May, it was not. May seventeenth, there was no Zoom access.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's this May.
Yes, this May.
No, I, I was not there.
Okay, it doesn't matter to me whether you're not.
No, but I know the one, I'm talking about the very first.
Okay, I'm talking about that one, there was no Zoom access. Which is illegal.
No, it's not required.
You just said it, you just said it.
That's correct, the chairman was incorrect, there is, Zoom access is an option.
Well, well, there's a why I'm not, we're gonna have both.
Okay, that's fine. The other thing is, it's for Kirsaj, I can't remember, you ran out of water? Okay, your property lines were all off, weren't they? Your property lines, you're going off of a neighbor's property line, not the Aggie's property line. And nothing, we were promised that something would be looked at for that because you guys did not have the right property lines in regards to the just distance from the, the property line. You were there, you know, Officer Stady, he would know. We discussed this, that we were going off of her line, which is a good twenty, thirty feet away from the Aggie property line, right? Do you remember that?
Or we'll use a survey.
But we want to see this stuff, like you're not open and transparent with us. When was this meeting here publicized?
We posted forty, on Friday.
Didn't you just say you need ten days?
That is for a public hearing.
I thought this was a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing.
This is a public meeting.
It's a public meeting.
Okay, so what's the numbers on that?
Forty-eight hours.
Okay. The other thing is, have you done a survey with the staff and students? To see what they feel is beneficial or not for this? Has there been a survey done? You keep saying how everyone's supportive of it, but there hasn't been any surveys.
Or if there have been, we would like to know.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, has there been any, as a principal, have you seen any, any you're new, but you would have record? Have you seen any surveys on the opinion? Cause we hear all the time how everyone wants it on campus. Am I wrong? Did you all say that?
We didn't say everybody.
Oh, you weren't at the meeting, so, and you would say most people, that was what said at the last meeting. But how do you know that? Where is the proof?
Whereas the protocol said at the meeting that the school is in favor of it.
So where is the proof of that? You're just making it up. You need a survey. I'd be fine if all of a sudden I realized that that was the main thing, but there is nothing, it's your opinion. Right, sir?
I wasn't at the May seventeenth.
And you know what? Have you guys done a survey yet?
I have no idea.
You should, you're on the trustees.
You said it's a school, don't, wait a minute, man, you said it's a school.
You are on the, you are on the trustee, for the trustees, right?
Correct.
And you're voting on something, right?
Correct. Listen.
No, no, let me finish, you don't need to talk down to me.
I'm not talking.
No, you are.
Okay, you might have made up before you got.
I don't want to hear about two thousand fifteen, I don't want to hear about that. I'm listening to what you guys have presented. And we only found out about this as neighbors within like the last two months. As neighbors, we didn't have anything going, we didn't, we weren't, no one's been transparent. But there has not been a survey, right? Wouldn't that be an important, wouldn't that be an important part of going forward with something? Anyone? No? Sir? Wouldn't that be important to know? If you're, if you're speaking for the community? Wouldn't that be important to know? If you're si- if you're speaking for the community?
Mr. Chairman, if I could jump in?
Yes, Commissioner.
Jump in a little bit, help you out. Um, the speaker uh, is right, and I think she brought that particular concern to my attention, I believe, when we met. And I did give her, I thought, the best answer I could. And and as honest, I can tell you, let me finish. I did say that I remember when I first, uh, before I became a trustee or commissioner, it was a hearing and it were a lot of students who were very upset about the trails. Matt, you might remember that. And it was significant student opposition because of the placement at the time of the of the solar array. Uh, but subsequent, as Kier Saj has noted, they've moved it around a little bit. And I know it, you may not agree with me and I respect that, but at the last public hearing, which Commissioner Shay could not attend, uh, that there were some students in favor and there were some students and
It was true.
that they were against, but it wasn't, it wasn't a formal, let me finish, please. There wasn't a formal survey. But as far as like, I understand where you're going, but as far as the process, I mean, certainly the trustees, all of us here, all of us as trustees, in one way or another, have worked with the administrators and or teachers in some way and gotten some kind of feeling about whether or not this is a good idea or a bad idea. And we formulate our own opinion on that. But no, there's been no formal survey, but it.
I think a formal so- survey should be done to survey these students and staff to see if they're for it. Papa Bob is taking over. All the admin people, as they always do, no offense because I'm a teacher, but admin and everyone else thinks they know it's best for everyone, but the kids have a voice and so do the teachers. And you need to stop listening to that. And that's a major piece. You say, oh, we're not gonna entertain any other place because we're doing this. Why? Well, and I know Mr. Stady, he he has been open about looking at other places. However, you're just saying, oh, the ship's already sailed. So you're not even thinking about anyplace else. Cause you don't want to look at it wherever. You know what? Do I look out when I look out my window? No, I don't. So I I would, before you do anything, I would send a survey to your community.
Yeah, I just had one comment. My understanding is that in two thousand seventeen, the school initiated this and they put out an R F I and there was significant feedback from the school. Uh, has there been a survey since then? I don't know that. We've had multiple meetings with staff, with students. I presented at you tell me at four or five um, Aggie trustee meetings that were open that had parents as well. So there's been significant um, circulation and things have not changed. And at that point, the only uh, since we're talking about the called the Aggs Solar Project, that was in the backwoods. Um, well, actually, there was another location.
Now it's changed and they haven't been advised of that completely because we. Sure.
Thank you. Um, we, there was actually another location in another field. Um, that was um, for many reasons, for aesthetics, location, a whole bunch of issues, interconnection, um, operations, it was moved, then it was moved. So we went back and forth with the school. We asked Tammy at that point to survey the teachers and come up with the best place. And they came back and they gave us multiple places, Rick Fitzpatrick did.
Can we see that survey?
I don't know.
Can we see that survey?
I don't know if it was a written survey.
But it needs to be a survey that you can look at and figure it out because you know what? We can survey all who we want. I can survey whoever and oh, they're they agree with me. Come on now, we need, I mean, you were speaking for the students that you haven't spoken to.
So in two thousand seventeen, we were approached by the environmental science teacher and a few students about doing this, which I was all for the portion that I told you, the small ground area roofs and, you know, the problem. This is way bigger than I expected it to be and it came as a surprise to me. Um, I don't ever remember voting on a solar um, consultant. Um, we have some guy, Tom in Westwood, who did it. That sounds
shady.
I would have loved to have known about this, especially from where we're at now.
His name is Tom Philbin. We've uh.
Yes, great.
Was a specialist consultant.
So.
That being said, I mean, I'm also an alumni here. I go to the alumni meetings and I have friends and students here. You know, the overwhelming majority of people, and this might just be my opinion, are against this project.
And that's why a survey would be appropriate. Not against solar. I don't think any of us here are against solar. We're against it where it is. And as you said, you haven't entertained any other place. Go do it on the golf course. They can eleven feet up, they can golf underneath. It's fun. Like, you know what? The fact that you just said we haven't entertained any other place and this is the seal, this ship is set seal? Why are we having meetings? Why are you bothering? This is what you're telling us. You're in charge and you're gonna do what you want, is what you're saying. That's that's how you're coming across to us. And maybe not what you mean, but it is. And as neighbors, it has been a scam. There's been no transparency. None. Can I, just can anyone send me the minutes for that last meeting? Because I can't locate them. I tried.
Which?
From the seventeen. Yep, May seventeen meeting. You can't, you click on it, there's nothing there. And we were told, oh, you get a search for it yourself. That's real transparent.
Who told you that?
You guys, when we were there. I believe it was Scott Lopez, Mr. Genius himself.
Well, um, we can definitely get you the minutes.
Yeah, we should have already had them. They're not, they're not publicized. That's illegal. Is there a amount of time that that has to be outlined?
Um, minutes have to be approved within
Okay.
thirty days and you can obviously always request minutes and we can email them to you this evening.
Okay, but why are they not on your site?
Uh, I'd have to look at the site.
Yep, can you?
Sure.
Because I think that's important as that, once again, it's not transparent. Let's see what we can do. You know what? I have to say, Commissioner Stady, thank you. He's been the only one that's been willing to work with us and talk to us and answer questions. Everyone else is hiding in their little offices. It's nice. But you don't understand. We have raised kids there. Do you know the people that walk through there? No one wants to walk underneath a solar farm. Are you kidding me? Oh, it's beautiful. Let me tell you. Those kids, that there is no way that the haunted hayride can ever happen. There is no way.
We have all taken the ride, by the way. Have you taken the ride?
Yep, have you gone the haunted hayride? How many of you have gone on? Yep.
Imagine.
So let's go down. Mr. O'Shea, you haven't been on it, but you want to.
I'm on it. I went to the first one about two years ago when I go on the road.
Okay, so maybe you should try going on that before you decide to put where you need to. You don't understand the excitement these kids get from this. This is their life. They can never get this back. And you took, and it's just ridiculous that like, oh, done deal. That's disgusting because why are you having meetings? The ship has sailed. I guess maybe guys, Channel Seven and Channel Five, all of them need to know the ship has sailed, Mr. O'Shea. That's ridiculous. You don't think that was an inappropriate comment?
What comment?
The ship has sailed, so we're not going to do any more looking?
I said, as far as I know, there's never been another study. I can't.
Yeah, I'll I'll let Kamali, you can speak before I get too angry. Sorry. My name is Kamali. I'm also a resident in the neighborhood and I have an abutting property, which is maybe twenty, thirty feet from this location. Uh, my first question is for Kier Sage. So we keep going back and forth on the educational component. When we get the public hearing where we saw the same slides, we knew for sure, we saw your slide that you had today also that talked about educational component, the doer, the the curriculum and all that. When you made, when you met on June twenty-first, there was a private meeting that you and all of our neighbors along with our Commissioner Stady had, you rejected that. You told us, no, no, I never said that. Well, loving all, so it's on your slide today again.
I'm sorry, I never said what.
That this, there is no, this has nothing to do with education component of for egg. Because my comment was, well, if you really want to bring educational component, have you asked students of how would they like their curriculum to be? Would this be of any benefit to them uh, having solar panels versus the farm land that's already going on right now? And when you walk past on Route One, we see that students and teachers are on the farm because that's a walking path. All of us walk twice a day, uh, the same path. And we see that there are sections, that if there's something growing that students have identified, have labeled trees, they have created some sort of an educational component over there. And my question was, how is this going to benefit or different than what's already been done? And to that, you said that there was no such thing. So now I'm really confused. Is there an educational component to having solar panels or not?
Um, I'm very confused by your comment too, but I can tell you, there's an educational component. There's data that from the design of it, from the construction of it, from the operation of it, from what crops will grow underneath this, from all the data that comes down, understanding what's called insulation, um, how you can maximize that. There's multiple components and that's been consistent with every um, PowerPoint and every presentation I think hasn't changed at all because we've also done this multiple schools.
Okay, and have you asked students how they feel about this?
Um, have I asked students at the Aggie about this or students at other places?
I know.
We've worked through the teachers. I haven't, I've met some of the students. They came with one walk. We had with Tammy. We had, uh, I'm guessing fifteen or sixteen students were part of that, as well as nine uh, different teachers. Um, and we answered their questions, but I haven't done.
For their opinion.
I haven't, I haven't done, we've worked through the school, which has been when this, remember when this was put out? This was initiated by students and teachers and approved by the school back then because the R F I was put out. I wasn't part of the process then, but we followed once the R F I was put out, we then responded to that. Have I gone back and surveyed students? That's not our role. We try to get as much feedback.
I agree. So I just want this point noted again that we would really like to see students' involvement on this. We are all educators. We are all in professional lives, doing something that matters to the students and the young generation. So we are not against the project. I just like to see how much are students and teachers involved and what they really want for the Aggie school. All right, I'm gonna move on. So the public hearing that we had on May seventeenth also mentioned about the same slides that now we have looked at it three times so so far. However, we have no access to the slides. So when we go on the North Fork County, we cannot find slides. When we go on the Aggie, outside of your internet, because we can access inside the Aggie's internet, but for what public can access, we can find this. And now today, you, so if you can just stay on that slide for one minute because my next question is on this slide. Now, today you're presenting the slides again, but it's extremely difficult, as you said, to read, listen, pay attention and take notes about the slides. So can you please make these slides available to us?
Yeah, we'll be happy to.
I'm sorry.
We'll be happy to.
Absolutely.
I'll put them on tonight.
They should have been.
Yeah.
We posted, the county has posted these slides numerous times, including the F A Q, as far as I understand.
They were different. They were different slides.
Different slides. It's your presentation. It's your professional vendor presentation.
Yeah, today's.
The other ones were different than what was on there. The other ones were back in January, I think it was.
All right, well.
Or prior, but it was not these ones.
We're we're happy to.
Thank you.
Um, because the ones at the public meeting were also, um, the the community meeting, uh, were also um, put up on the website, as far as I know.
Okay, so we will expect the access to these slides. Awesome. Can I, may I have permission to come close to the screen because I want to point something on that map? No, you can keep going up. Yeah? Do I have permission to approach the screen?
Okay.
Thank you.
Go for it.
So when we attended the public hearing on May seventeenth, this was the origin, this was the proposal. Okay, so we are the neighbors that live on this side of the land. This is my house. You see the distance between the property or where you're putting the panels and mine? It's literally maybe ten trees at best. How do I know this? You know this? Because when we did the walkthrough with Commissioner Stady and Kier Sage, you were standing right here and you saw through and you said, really? This is it? I said, yes, sir, this is it. So I know you know this. Okay, when it on May seventeenth, when this meeting was held and we were presented with this proposed area of the map, the neighbors in this L-shaped community, we all got official notices saying this is, you are attend, you are required to attend or be, you know, say, be, keep your peace or whatever.
Yeah, those two bodies, yeah.
Okay, good. So that's how we know. Do you think as public, we go on your websites like every day, like, oh, like eight o'clock after dinner, let me go on county's website and see what's going on? How do we know unless we get notified? So this one, we got a notice about a week before. We all had to put everything aside and say, guys, we gotta come together, like, what's going on? That's how we are all here together because now we work as a cohort because we feel nobody's actually paying attention or cares for our feelings or our opinions unless we all seven or and three are not here because they could not, all ten of us show up and kind of raise our opinions. Okay, so we feel that we are not working on the same page here. Anyway, we got the notice when we went on the May seventeenth. Then this happened. Now, when you moved the proposed land from that to this, that's great. So some of the neighbors on this field are now feeling a little relief, like, oh, it's not immediately in my backyard. That hasn't changed for me and seven other people who are still in the abutting property. My question is, now, how are you notifying this group? Because there are houses all over here as well. So what about them? How did they get a notice like we got a week ago? When when this meeting took place on May seventeen? Now, when you change the proposed land, I am still fully engaged because I was like, if I don't stand up and speak for myself, I don't, I don't know if I have a friend in this room. What about these people? How have you notified them? Because I'm here to represent them too.
Jay, you want to tell you? Um, to be clear, the notice you got was not an official one. It was a courtesy notice. We were not required to inform abutters. We we are required to inform abutters when we go to site plan review with the zoning board and the planning board. Uh, those are official requisites uh, within the law. Um, to to your point about information on the project, um, I can't speak to that. We have had meetings, as we said, we've been talking about this since two thousand seventeen. We had a very large uh, public hearing uh, during COVID in two thousand twenty, where people asked us to move it out of the trees and into the fields, which is how we have now.
No, that was phase three.
That's when we, when we talked, when we had the public hearing, it was for, it was for both.
It was not.
It was.
Because then we voted on phase three.
It was, we talked about both in the public.
We talked about both.
I was at the public meeting and I did not hear that. I only heard about the field, is it in between part?
In two thousand and twenty.
I presented.
In two thousand and.
Lauren, this is when we do.
All right, one at a time, one at a time.
Uh, so we talked about both areas. We had a tremendous amount of input, asking us to take down as few trees as possible, which is how we have arrived here with the back field, which is taking down a markedly smaller amount of trees. So we we then, because we have moved to a different parcel, we have another public hearing process, uh, which we, uh, which we did in May, May, uh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, two years later. Um, and again, if the commission decides to, and the trustees decide to move forward with this, we will still have to go through the town process of building and we will still have to go through the um, planning board and we will again have to notify everyone who abuts the parcel. And the parcel is, uh, if you look on a zoning map, it's quite large. It's the four hundred Main Street parcel, which goes all the way down Fisher, uh, all the way down, uh, one A and takes a left in about School Street as well. So there's like a number of o- other additional opportunities for.
So as you said, it's a courtesy. You are not required to. As you said, that you will follow the rules. As you have said, you will follow the rules. Here's my basic question. Are you only here to follow the rules but not use general reach out and kind of meet or connect with the community and work with the community? Where's your mind at this? Are you only going to follow rules and do what you have to do by the letter of the law? Just check things off as you go along? Or are you actually interested in reaching out and working with us? We have been in this neighborhood for twenty-plus years. Is this how you like the neighborhood to be? No, this is not for you, sir. This is for my community. I'll go back. I'll go back to answer, ask more questions, but just think about that. How does that feel to you if you were the neighbors and some other commission was in your neighborhood, doing what you are doing to this neighborhood? Just think about that, please.
I think it's critical that we communicate and speak with the neighbors. Um, it, it appears as if that hasn't happened, but I think it has to happen.
Thank you, thank you.
That's, I mean, I, I have new uh to this board in the last few months, so I'm trying to get up speed. Uh, about, you know, the entirety of the project, but um. Communication is essential.
Thank you.
And without it, you know, then it's adversarial, nothing can get done. Um.
Thank you so much. If there was one thing we wanted to get out of this, it is this. We have to communicate. We are human beings. We want to be good neighbors to each other. I respect and I love the Norfolk County Agricultural School. I don't want to do anything wrong by my standards to this high school. And I'm not even part of the high school, I'm just a neighbor in the neighborhood. If I feel so deeply because I live there and my kids have grown in that field and have grown up in those fields. Along with all of us, all this kids. I know you feel more than that, because you are part of this school. This is not the way to do business. Thank you for listening and I thank you for agreeing that we have to communicate better. I'll go on to my final topic. So, I don't understand the language of the phases. I'm not a politician. I'm not anywhere associated with the rules or regulations, except for what I do for my job. But I don't understand how things move along without even all of you being on the same page. So what I learned today is that you know some things, but you are trying to get up to speed. You know some things, but you are still in the face. Then we have a commissioner on this side and you are a new principal. How did, how does this function? How can I trust that you are gonna make the right choices? Because just what I see today, I'm not getting a good feeling about this.
I think the only way to answer that question is, I'm gonna have to rely on Laura, who is our secretary. We have the minutes of every meeting in some sort of form.
Since twenty thirteen that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, that's certainly before this. I think we'd have to go back and, and supply you with the minutes, because. When I said earlier that I remember my very first meeting and how I thought it was further along than it turned out to be. Because there were a lot of people at the early meetings that were far and they were from this school family. I can't say there were neighbors there, but I didn't know any of the neighbors then, but. All of that is documented. I mean, this, the day we, we keep records of those meetings and, and things were presented and votes were taken. And then last year, it started to fall apart, or a little earlier than last year, sixteen months ago. But we had gone beyond a certain threshold, you know, on votes that were taken.
Where was I when the votes were being taken? Where was I when this meetings were being held? Where was I when these discussions took place? Why didn't I raise my voice earlier?
So phase three and four were given to us, so that original vote we took came down.
Right, we took them all, all at order trustee meetings.
No, I understand. So that meeting we did on Zoom, if this included phase four, why weren't they given notification about it?
And there are ten more neighbors who are not even here right now, easily, because they don't even know that this is happening.
So do you know what I'm talking about? You guys presented phases three and four.
Because we weren't voting on phase four. We presented, here's the current plan where we were. The focus was on phase three as part of that meeting, which is correct. Phase four, we said, here's where phase, what I was in phase four, I think it's really phase three, because the first phase was. Um, but we'd be happy to document the whole process we have, but one of the big things that you may not remember is. There was no parking lot came in phase one. So when you say the parking lot came, that went from the beginning, there was a public meeting for all of Walpole in two thousand. And uh seventeen or two thousand and eighteen.
Yep.
With everyone, public meeting, and the whole vision was presented at that stage. So until we get to the process, and I think it's what uh Bill is saying is absolutely right. Till you get to a planning board review, um, that's when, when you do, whether it's a housing project or a solar project. That's when you notify neighbors and by law, but trying to get more feedback now, that's been the whole process. And that's why when Commissioner Stady said, will you come? And I said, sure, we want to get more feedback. And that's when we did the public meeting, we went out there and people came and said, hey, we've got some issues. So we'll go out and check. If the survey is wrong, you're absolutely right. We have to have the right survey. We're not gonna do some of this wrong. We have to look at the property lines.
So some of our rates.
Is it twenty feet, is it a hundred feet? I, I, we're going out, the published survey maps, which we've had access to. Would say from the edge of the array to the property line is a minimum of a hundred feet, as is right now. If that's incorrect, then we've got to correct it. Your concerns are very good concerns. No one's trying to. Put something twenty feet and by law, you have setbacks, as Commissioner Stady, I believe, said when we did the walk. There are certain things you can't do by planning board rules. So we have to look at that. So your questions are good questions. And we, this, this has moved so much because there's been so much feedback. We've had a lot of feedback from the internal community at the school, where it's gone. And Kearsage has relied on um the principal and you weren't here, so we can't point to you. But Tammy Quinn and her staff to give feedback. And that's what we relied on. And Rick Fitzpatrick, who came back and he said, where, where should we put this?
So Rick has told me, I had no idea people would be so angry about this entire thing going in the middle of the woods. I mean.
I, I, I can't, I can't answer because we can ask Rick, but we went back and people said in the middle of the woods. So we said, okay, that doesn't work. So we moved it to another location, looked at every possible location on the campus. We have to, there's other issues that affect due to the solar project, as we discussed. The interconnection, um, or the wetlands, all sorts of other issues. And there are wetlands on this property, you know, Matt. Um, um, so you have to come up with what's the best location. But your feedback, and I think, I can't speak for anyone except for Kearsage. But I think there's an openness to take more feedback. And that's why we moved it and said, here's another proposed location.
So you moved it, but did you consider the feedback from me? Like now it's really close to you. Do you think about that?
That, that was um, that, if you take, we can look at it back, but it's not that much closer than it was before.
Oh, my gosh.
Sir, you were with us when I walked you from my backyard to see this field. And you could have reached your hand, like two people would have stood like this and you were in my yard and in the field. It's literally that much distance.
But we didn't mark it out. But if you look at those two pictures, which are the same Google Earth. Um, the one on the left is closer to the uh tree line than the one on the right, the second one.
They're different sizes. They're different.
Comparing, you would have killed people back the ups. There is no way, two ways, always about that.
But I'm, what I'm talking about is, in terms of the measurements, which we've used on a survey. Were no closer to your property than we were before, but the whole thing is, all we did, we did not move it closer to the east. We moved actually more to the west and more to the north. And we'll, we'll, we'll mark that out with survey lines and you can take a look at that. That's a perfectly fair question.
So let, let me just focus back to the, the day, there was on June twenty-first. Ten neighbors met along with Commissioner Stady, because it was my private meeting. I was beside myself after the public hearing, where we were told. That this is a public hearing meeting, meaning I cannot ask questions. I can only state my feelings and they were recorded and there was no forum for me to ask the question and receive some. That was, I was beside myself that this is a public hearing and maybe those are the rules. But that's not how we, I function in a hospital. When we have public meetings, it's a dialogue. But that's besides the point. So after that, when we walked, I had invited a group and Bill, you came with us too. To come to my art property. We, we, instead of walking it from this end, from that, I said, no, you need to take a look at it from the other end. So we got pulled up in our father's side and we stood on my end of the property. And Mrs. Orwell's end of the property and looked at the field. And it is, where if I am here, the field starts where the screen is. I am not kidding. If you have any time today, we would love to have you again. I'll show it to you right today. Again, and you can see, have you seen this? Have you seen it from the angle that I see and neighbors see? If I'm sitting in my dining room. Uh, that, that's the field I'm seeing. It's that distance. Would you like that from your dining room? Anybody?
So I.
And, and this is not, this is not because I'm against the fair. I am, I'm, I'm talking exactly what everybody's trying. I don't think this is the right location, guys. I don't think that taking a open farmland. And even cutting any amount of trees is a good choice on our part. There are many other options and to go back to the first point that we were talking about with Commissioner. If you have not understood or looked at other options, or if you was looked at beyond your time. You know what? Maybe we need to come back and look at this again. I am willing to join you to look at other options. I want to join forces with you. Let's do this together. Let's look at other options. But just because the decisions were made before your time, that does not mean that we carry on. Knowing that it's not the right thing to do, we cannot consciously just keep going at it. The minute you consciously feel this is wrong, we stop and we readjust and we look at other options. That's how we work in society. We don't just keep bargaining because that was done before my time. You know what? I'm a professional. I have taken over roles and responsibilities from my predecessors. I don't just carry forward what they've said. I improve, I improvise. I make it better because now I'm in charge of it. I just don't carry the old jump forward. That's not how we do. It is now been our hands to make it right. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
I have one more question. Okay, two. So I apologize. Kirsten, how much is Kearsage getting out of this? What is their profit from this?
What is our?
What is Kearsage's profit is my question.
Is the word profit?
Well, it would be a profit if that's what they're making out of this field.
Um, we won't see any.
What is the final amount is my question.
I cannot tell you until we have the cost to build it, but I can tell you this. That we don't see any profit on a project like this for eight years. So it's a long-term return and you're looking at over twenty, depends on uh electricity prices.
What is the average then? What is the average?
I can tell you that we're looking at a return of somewhere between four to six percent. Which is pretty low for a business, but that's the nature of solar.
So in dollars, that would be around what?
Depends on what the, on the pressures.
Can you give me, just give me an average? What is something you other ones that you said you're done?
I can't. They're, they're very different.
But I would just like to know what the profit was on, say, another one highest.
It, it's, it's, you're comparing, I'm sorry, you're comparing apples to oranges. Depends on the size, depends on the interconnection.
So no more transparency.
But I think we, excuse me one second. It's not a question of a private company being transparent. That's incorrect. That's not how business works. Can you tell you how much your business makes per year? Can you tell me about this? That's, you're confusing public with private. But what's really important to understand is the amount of work that also goes into it, you understand. I understand that people here do not want this solar project in this field. They want nothing in this fields. They want it as a pure field. And that's what Commissioner Stady brought up at the end of our walk. Said basically, you don't want anything here. And that's perfectly, you're right.
Okay, but we're going, but we're going off. I just asked you.
Can I, can I finish, please?
Fine.
We were letting you tie, we have to finish because I think it's important. What some of the things that you don't have the information is, when you do an interconnection here, you only have a certain amount of time to build a project. Because you have to interconnect the utility, which can cost, in this case, hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's incentives that the states put out. The, all the incentives will go away. If you don't uh have a certain amount of time and you're running out of time to build this project. So that's a whole nother issue here. And in terms of other locations, you have to realize that this isn't a plug and play. If you want to put something on top of a roof and things like that, you have issues with that because of economies of scale. Because it may cost a same amount of money to connect the project to the courthouse in Dedham. As it is to connect the project that's six times as large. This project was cut back in size for many reasons, is to try and take some of the feedback. But whether it's Kearsage, another company, the county, you're not gonna be able to please everyone.
I know, I know, and I'm not at that right now. But I'm not, that's not what I'm asking. I know you're not gonna be able to please everyone and that's also.
I'm almost done.
Alright, I'm glad you have to keep with the feel of not gonna please everyone.
I'm not, I'm not just gonna, please don't be rude. I'm trying to be very. What we're trying to do here is, one of the things that was asked, which Commissioner asked, is can you put landscaping? Absolutely, we can put landscaping. Is, is this twenty feet or is it a hundred feet? Those are very uh uh important questions that need to be answered. Um, if you're building, uh, putting up a fence around the pool that you're building. How can we make sure that we're not gonna injure the sightlines and in other important projects? Those are all real concerns that we'll take into consideration. And when you do a site plan review, those issues come up. That's how it works.
And that's not what I was, I, I'm aware of that. I'm aware, that was not my question. I know that all this. My question was, how much is Kearsage making out of this? I know in those slide, the Aggie was only getting thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. Two outside.
So, just let me.
Wait, excuse me, don't be rude, let me finish. Um, two out of district kids would be forty-eight thousand dollars. You charge, as I'm a teacher, twenty-two hundred dollars and then another twenty-two something for in-district kids to come here. Okay, where's the money in this? And also, shouldn't those other districts be, have a say in what's happening here too? You send a lot of kids here. Three hundred and ten out-of-district kids at twenty-four thousand dollars a year. Right? Adding two kids is not gonna kill your classrooms, because I know I'm a teacher. Two outside district kids would make more than what you're gonna get out of this. And maybe increase, we talk about money and everything else, because that wasn't the first line, was talking about making money. Because you guys are in a deficit and I know that eventually people want to go to solar. But if you're, what money coming into the, the school? Let's take forty thousand away from the haunted hayride. Let's charge twenty-two hundred, and I have these numbers, because my superintendent sent them to me. Twenty-two hundred dollars, I pay more than daycare a year. And then twenty-two in other fees. It's under five thousand dollars to attend here. Maybe look there, as we're talking about, that was brought up in the last meeting, was a deficit of the school and trying to make more money. Thirty-seven thousand dollars isn't gonna get you anything.
So in terms of total numbers, this is worth over twenty years, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. To the county from rent um alone. And in terms of energy savings, it's worth another five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you're.
But not for us, if you remember correctly from our meeting. We were told, no, you guys are not getting anything in the neighborhoods of the town. You remember that, sir?
It's, it's the program I said to you, I think we need to be accurate. If the town of Walpole wants to offer the energy savings, you as a community, you can get them. We can't control that. We offered that to Walpole, which I told you at that meeting. And Walpole said, we don't want to do it. You can do something called community aggravated solar, or community solar, and you can get those benefits. But we can't do that.
So the town of Walpole is against this, right? We all know that.
I mean.
We know that.
Yes.
So why would they agree to anything, any benefits? Like, they just don't want this here.
But they can do it, they can do it from any project. Doesn't have to be our project. They can do it any project in town and they don't do it. So I can't answer your question.
I can speak to all the projects that.
No, but they can do projects in town, but they're not doing.
But I can tell you, that I can tell you that the town of Walpole is not in favor of this.
That, that, that seems to be uh absolutely, that they voted against um uh option taking over the land. But I can tell you that if. But I can tell you that if the town of Walpole wanted to offer benefits to its citizens, they could do it right now. Nothing to do with this project.
But, but that's what I'm saying. We, they are not going to entertain or engage in any conversation about benefits for a project that they don't support.
But that, but I'm, but you, you're missing my point. I'm saying they can do it for other projects if they want to.
I can't speak to other projects.
No, but they could have.
I'm fully enclosed and fully taken up right now with this solar project. In addition to renting a house and a full-time job, we all left work at three o'clock so we can come to this meeting today at four.
At four. We're requesting a later meeting in the future.
So for the town of Walpole, no, I don't think that's a fair statement that, that you had expectation that had from them. They are against the project and I'm in favor of that. I support my tribe for that.
So I've heard a lot of people talk about feedback today. Do you think maybe, um, we have to re-watch the feedback we got from the Zoom call on phase three? And then I wasn't able to attend the meeting on May sixteenth. I watched it on YouTube. I mean, I sense that it's overwhelmingly negative towards the project. Does everyone have to watch it again? You know, we keep talking about feedback and, you know, what, what are we supposed to do with this? How long is this going to go on? You know, how long are we going to be in a lawsuit as far as the county goes versus the town? What's the end game here? If you stop, Lopez can answer that.
Anyone else want to speak who haven't spoken? Last call. Last call for the board members. Any other comments? Any other comments, please? Okay, I'm going to declare this meeting over and thank you very much. Uh, please, I've taken some notes. I'm going to try to supply some minutes going way back. Sixteen and seventeen. When we asked the question, I think, how did we get here? Somehow, uh, people lose, even, even had a bit through it, we lose track of how we got here, but I, there is, there is a record here and we're going to, uh, produce it. Yes.
I think we need a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
But we need a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I, I was gonna, I'll take a motion with your head if that's what you want.
Second.
Okay, a motion with your head. All in favor?
All right.
It is your name. Again, thank you very much.